Our invocation is by Peggy Darnett from Southside Christian Church. Peggy, if you would, please.
Thank you, Council. I'm happy to be here. Will you pray with me, please? Most Holy One, before whom we call ourselves servants of the people, on this evening we ask for your Spirit of wisdom, peace, and mercy. We ask for wisdom in that all deliberations be done with thoughtfulness, all choices be made with foresight. We ask for peace, striving toward healing in our neighborhoods, and fairness in all the business at hand. We ask for mercy, as these leaders are wrestling with limited resources and numerous demands, and yet are making decisions for the well-being of the entirety of this community. We ask that you help these women and men stay true to their convictions, yet give them strength to accept their responsibilities to all of their fellow citizens. Bless them for their sacrifice and service. And finally, teach us all to be people who rely on you, Most Holy One. Amen.
Thank you. May we be seated? We'll call John. Mr. Henry Davis.
Henry's here.
Mrs. Shea.
Here.
Dr. Furlett.
Here.
Dr. Varner is excused. Oliver Davis.
Present.
Mr. Dieter is excused. Mr. Furlett.
Here.
Councilmember White.
Present.
President Tim Scott.
Present.
Seven present. Thank you. Report from Subcommittee on Minutes, please. To the Common Council of the City of South Bend, the Subcommittee has inspected the minutes of the March 23, 2015 meeting of the Council and found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved. Signed, Tim Scott, David Varner.
I'd like to make a motion to accept a report from the Subcommittee on Minutes.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Before we proceed to special business, there was a bill and a resolution that have been continued. So if you are here tonight for 1415 Initiative on the Homeless, it has been continued. Or if you're here for Resolution 1513 regarding property tax assessments, that has also been continued. So just want to make that clear. Okay, special business. Mr. Hordy. Special Business, 1520. A resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, recognizing the many contributions of the Indiana Chapter of the American Society of Landscape Architects and officially designating April 2015 as World Landscape Architecture Month in South Bend, Indiana.
Whereas, the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, recognizes that April 2015 is World Landscape Architecture Month, which is a month-long opportunity to celebrate landscape architecture and design public spaces which complement our natural environment throughout the world. And whereas, 49 chapters of the American Society of Licensed Architects, which was founded in 1899, will be collaborating with landscape architects and/or organizations in foreign countries by connecting with its 72 student chapters, 15,000 member and other organizations by Skype and other forms of social media throughout World Landscape Architecture Month, formerly known as National Landscape Architecture Month. And whereas, Indiana has been a very strong and noted leader in this area with both Ball State University and Purdue University celebrating their 50th anniversaries of their landscape architecture programs. And whereas, locally, landscape architects have made a tremendous impact on the city of South Bend, with some examples including George Kessler's vision of linking the city's park system with Tree Line Boulevards and special places like Leaper Park, Eddy Street Commons, and the Riverside Trail. And whereas, the Common Council further recognizes that the Indiana Chapter of the American Society of Landscape Architects works daily to advance landscape architecture through advocacy, communication, education, and fellowship, with the following map depicting just some of the chapters throughout the United States participating in this year's worldwide activities. Now therefore, it be resolved to the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, as follows. Section 1, on behalf of all the residents of the City of South Bend, Indiana, the Common Council formally designates April 2015 as World Landscape Architecture Month in our city and recognizes the Indiana Chapter of the American Society of Landscape Architects and their dedicated membership, professional, and student chapters for the commitment of the highest ethical standard stewardship, planning, design, and sustainability. And 2, the Common Council believes that World Landscape Architect Month provides an opportunity for residents to participate in local Earth Day activities on April 25 to celebrate the birthday of Frederick Law Alstom. On April 27, the founder of landscape architecture profession in North America, and experience the countless contributions made by landscape architects throughout our rich and vibrant community and should celebrate it each April thereafter. Section 3, this resolution shall be in full force and effective from and after adoption by the Common Council and approval by the mayor.
We also like Jonathan to come and say a few words and name an address.
Jonathan Gils, 1862 North Adams Street in South Bend. I'm very fortunate to represent the Indiana Chapter of the American Society of Landscape Architects as their president here tonight. I want to thank you all for this recognition and say that landscape architects have historically sought to solve the most pressing issues that our society faces, including energy efficiency and climate change, stormwater management and community resiliency, as well as attachment drivers for communities and environmental justice. We advocate for transportation, planning and design, water and stormwater management, community design and development, as well as small business growth and development. So thank you very much. I sincerely appreciate it on behalf of all landscape architects in the state and across the nation.
Turn it back to Council for any comments.
First, I'd like to say congratulations, especially to Jonathan Gils. It's been nice working with you over the last couple of years, especially to City Cemetery. I've seen how you've taken the time to listen, to motivate, to encourage people to recognize the treasures that we've had here. And with your eye that you bring to the whole arena, you're able to help other people look through it. And you've awakened people to the treasure that we have here, and I thank you for that. And so I think that's the role of our landscape architects, to help us to look through your eyes, because your eyes see things often times that we cannot see. And you do a good job in helping us to paint that picture.
Thank you. Bellard.
Thank you, Jonathan. I know the importance of public space and the design of it and the impact that it has on our daily life. And so I appreciate your commitment to that.
Thank you. Councilperson White.
Jonathan, I'd like to thank you for sharing your talents, your gifts, and to help to move our city forward in regards to the designs and just really your commitment to listen to the citizens and to come back and to present that which you heard, and then also that which you know will make a good design for our community. So I sincerely appreciate all your great work. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Dr. Furlett.
Thanks, John, for your past commitments and your future commitments with South Bend 150, which is our celebration in May, as everyone knows. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, and thank you so much for your commitment and your talents that you've displayed in this city. Looking forward to working with you throughout the year and next year as well, and so on to the future. Thank you, Henry. We'll turn it over to the public for any comment for. Seeing none, anybody against? Seeing none, we'll bring back.
Entertain a motion to adopt by acclamation?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Here it goes. All right, thank you, Jonathan. Bye. We're all in peace, all right. Mr. Hordy, 1521, please.
A resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, enthusiastically endorsing the recycled glass mosaic project for the East Race at Colfax Underpass, proposed by local public artist Chris Stackowitz.
I'm going to divert a little bit from the common "whereas, whereas, whereas", because I get a little tired of that. But I'm just going to tell you, Bill number 1521, what a talented young man we have here, helping our city. He's the person that's responsible for the painted window and door replacements that we did last year, to beautify South Bend, to decrease vandalism. He's the person that also corralled 963 volunteers to do the 933 Bridge. That's great. He's doing this recycled mosaic glass project, which is 2,400 square feet on the East Race. And how many volunteers do you have?
Approximately 1,000.
1,000 volunteers. And just for one second, divert. Tell them how long it's going to, what you've got. He's planned this, obviously, but they're going to do it all in what? Three days?
Three days.
And tell them what you're going to do.
Microphone, name and address, please.
Christopher Stackowitz, 51308 Gilroy Court, Granger. We will be creating approximately 2,400 square feet made out of recycled glass and tile from a number of different local businesses. And it will stretch underneath Colfax Avenue along the East Race at that underpass. I believe it's the first bit of public art that is going up on the East Race. So we're very excited about doing that. We've invited a number of different groups and organizations to officially participate, but we're always looking for more volunteers on it. We plan on beginning to install it Saturday morning of Memorial Day weekend, and everybody signing their names on Monday night at the end of Memorial Day weekend. So in three days, we plan on covering a massive square footage of space in the city. The design is a sequence of waves and ribbons to go along with the theme of South Bend as a ribbon city that is part of the SB 150 celebration.
And that's his fourth project. And we have our own crystal present right here. He's the gentleman, the artist, that did all the fabric work in California and Paris and that. And he's our own crystal. So I'm going to, he's done four great things here. So I'm just going to end it by saying, "South Bend Common Council urges all individuals who wish to be part of this exciting recycled glass mosaic project, complete a volunteer form, which will be made available April 14 through May 20. Thanks to the dedication, caring attitude, vision, talent, and commitment of special people like Chris Stackowitz and the many volunteers, businesses, and organizations he recruits and engages to be part of this innovative artistic community-wide projects, the city of South Bend, Indiana will continue to flourish for generations to come." And I'd like to thank my co-sponsors, Gavin Furlett, Karen White, and Tim Scott. And this is a very, very well-deserved award. Thank you.
Bring it back to the Council.
Do we have comments while we start off with Karen?
Thank you so much for your wonderful work. I do plan to volunteer.
Wonderful, thank you.
You're welcome.
I love everything you've done in the city. Thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you, Gavin.
You're doing a wonderful work to help beautify our city. So I thank you for bringing your artistic eye.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Chris, and look forward to this project. This is going to be beautiful.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. I appreciate everything you've done.
Thank you. And always say yes to art. Always say yes to art, man. Thank you.
We will now turn it over to the public for any comment for or against. Seeing none?
Motion to adopt by acclamation?
Second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Thank you. Mr. Hordy, 1526, please.
1526, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, recognizing that the month of April is National Child Abuse Prevention Month.
Mr. Davis, is that it?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Common Council colleagues and President Tim Scott. I'm going to ask that the Department of Children and Family Services, that as long as they came here to stand in favor of the bill, just come up to me, come up to the podium with me, please.
Okay, come on up.
Councilmembers, I wanted to first say, I want to say thank you for the opportunity to present this resolution for you. And I also wanted to obviously go back a couple of years. A couple of years ago, and probably more than two years ago, we had a similar resolution before us that included Smell Sturgis. And at that time, the young guy was brutally beaten and ultimately died from his injuries at the hands of his father. And at that time, we all came together as a community. We mourned his death, and we paid attention to the effects of child abuse. As a matter of fact, we had a similar situation like this here, where a lot of folks came from different departments, even the prosecutor's office, and talked in favor of, you know, changing the way that we looked at our children and investing our youth a lot more. So those situations will have to occur again. And obviously, child abuse continues to happen over and over again. And this is right here, it's obviously a display of the workers that do a lot of the work. They see all the unforeseen conditions and circumstances that are applied to these children, from the worst to some of the most extreme cases. I'm sure they have a lot of horror stories. I've talked to a couple of them about their stories they've had. The conditions that some of our children live in are quite extreme. And I think that, you know, obviously, they deserve a round of applause. Because I think it took a lot of heat from the state, and has been taking a lot of heat from the state for, you know, the lack of funding that is proposed and the fact that they're not even doing the job that they are supposed to do. And I kind of, you know, want to push against it because I think they show up every day with their kids on their hearts and their minds and making sure their job is done faithfully and correctly. So I want to offer a round of applause there for that. And I also wanted to, you know, piggyback. This past weekend, I had the opportunity to talk to a school teacher, and she was just telling me, child abuse, you know, just doesn't happen like we want to believe it happens at the hands of an adult beating on the child. As a matter of fact, the teacher told me that she can tell when a child is being abused by their test scores based upon where they're coming from. Meaning the test scores are always really low from a child that's coming from an impoverished environment. And obviously, that starts the trend on where that child ends up in life based upon their test scores. We know that the third grade test scores are the pipeline on the path to the prison industrial complex. And so when we're deciding and talking about how the city looks, we have to start paying attention to how some of these things are going to affect us, not next year, but probably 20 years down the line, as well as to a lot of our children. So whereas the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, recognizes that the Children's Bureau within the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services funds the National Child Abuse Prevention Month Initiative each April, with the first such declaration being made by the Presidential Proclamation in 1983. And whereas, the public should be aware that there are many resources which address child abuse prevention, which are aimed to protect children from risk of abuse, to strengthen and support families, to help manage stress, to bring child sexual abuse, to making healthy connections with family members, to just to name a few. And whereas, the Common Council further recognizes that the Administration for Children and Families is a division of the Department of Health and Human Services which promotes the economic and social well-being of families, children, individuals, and communities. Whereas, many communities throughout the nation are creating pinwheel gardens, where their communities use the symbol of a pinwheel to show that this is everyone's responsibility to ensure that every single child should have the opportunity to grow up in a healthy and safe environment. Whereas, there are many public and private agencies diligent working hard to end child abuse with the 24-hour child abuse and neglect hotline being 1-800-556... No, I'm sorry, 1-800-5556. And whereas, in 2005, the Indiana Department of Child Services was created as a standalone agency charged with administering Indiana child prevention in a 4D child support system in which, in hopes of helping to protect children and support the families through services that focus on family support and preservation. Now therefore, a letter be resolved by the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, as follows. Section 1, on behalf of all the residents of the City of South Bend, Indiana, the Common Council formally recognizes that the month of April 2015 is National Child Abuse Prevention Month, which stresses the importance of families and communities working together to prevent child abuse. Section 2, the Common Council urges all residents of the City of South Bend, Indiana, to become informed and proactive by participating in public and private programs aimed at ending all forms of child abuse. Section 3, the resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its adoption by the Common Council and approval by the mayor, and is signed by all council members, including the mayor of the City of South Bend, Indiana.
Council, it's to your pleasure. Thank you. Any comments here from Council?
I would like to say to all of the social workers, the case managers, the supervisors, I sincerely appreciate, and I know the Council as well, all the hard work that you do. It's not an easy task. It's been stated that any nation that does not take care of its youth or its elderly is a nation on decline. And because of the work that you do on a daily basis, and I'm quite sure that it doesn't stop when you leave your jobs. You take it home. It's a tough, tough job that you have. And we are just so grateful that you have walked into this profession. And we're grateful for the work that you do on behalf of our children. Thank you so much.
Concur with Councilwoman White. Thank you for all the great work you do here in our community.
It's an honor and indeed a pleasure to honor you all tonight. As a such, I reckon myself, I've worked with many of you. And, you know, working with children is not just a job, it's a calling. And if you're not called to it, you don't stay in it. And many of you have been out here for decades. And that's what I really appreciate, because of the fact that it's through the work that you do that makes our city stronger. You know, one child at a time, one family at a time. And it's something. When you work with the families that we have worked with over the years, it teaches you to see life through a different eye. And you hear pains that other people don't hear, and you see it by going to their homes, by being in their neighborhoods. And so tonight, we say thank you.
Thank you very much. You are truly the unsung hero of the defenseless. Because of you, we now have emergency room protocols that have been developed over the last 20 years for those children that are abused and they're put in their proper position so they can succeed in life. They're taken out of that terrible environment. And if it wasn't for you calling our attention to that, none of this would have happened. So I really want to thank you for all the good you've done from the public health standpoint. Thank you.
Bellard.
Thank you is probably not enough to say, but it's really humbling to think what your days must be like. And I, from the bottom of my heart, am so grateful for what you do. So thank you.
I cannot add anything more than what these people have said, other than truly, we are thankful. So with that, go ahead. Welcome up to the public.
My name is Teresa Zornig. I'm from Department of Child Services. And Will Horton is also here, and a lot of our staff. And this, I wanted to also point out, is Jennifer Pickering, who is from Prevent Child Abuse, St. Joe County. So the St. Joe County Department of Child Services and Prevent Child Abuse, St. Joe County, would like to thank the Common Council for acknowledging April as the National Child Abuse Prevention Month. We are fortunate to live in a community that has a wealth of resources which allows each childhood family to be strengthened. We would like to formally thank the vital stakeholders in our community that work directly with family in need, people such as therapists, mental health professionals, case managers, medical professionals, educators, law enforcement officers, and other government representatives who work on a daily basis to support our community. April is a reminder that we all have a responsibility to prevent child abuse and neglect, and that every citizen has an opportunity to make a positive impact on a child's life. We know that some families have additional challenges and stresses that place them at greater risk for abuse or neglect. So it's imperative that we take every opportunity to support an overwhelmed family. Each person in this community can make this impact by being a good friend, a good neighbor, a caring teacher, a caring family member. You, as a citizen, can lend a hand when you can, listen when someone needs to talk, and offer a shoulder to lean on. A separate avenue of support that any citizen can do is to volunteer for organizations that support families in our community. I also want to talk a little bit about our pinwheel event that's going on, and I'm going to have Jennifer Pickering, or do you want me? Okay. I'm going to have Jennifer talk about our April Prevent, our community event. So the Indiana Department...
Your name and address, please, for the record.
Jennifer Pickering, 52159 Arrowhead Circle, Granger. The Indiana Department of Services started two or three years ago having an annual partnership with Prevent Child Abuse to kind of celebrate children over the month of April. So this year, we are doing it on May 2, because the South Bend Cubs, who was also our partner, was too popular to get in during April. So we have an event scheduled Saturday, May 2, where our pinwheel garden will be planted to represent all the children in care in St. Joseph County. And we would certainly encourage the public and everyone to come. There will also be lots of information about foster parenting, volunteering, what child abuse and neglect is. It's kind of our public way to talk about how to get involved in this cause. So we have some information, and we will leave it, we will leave it somewhere here.
You leave it with the court.
We can leave it with the court. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak against? Seeing none, move back to Council.
Motion to adopt by acclamation?
Second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Thank you. Come on up. Good. You're welcome, hey? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Congratulations. How are you doing? Let's see. Thank you. How you doing? Nice to see you. Nice to see you. You guys, you're welcome. All right, man. Hi. Nice to see you. Thank you. Nice to see you, dude.
Thank you.
Hey, congratulations. You're welcome. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much. Hi. I love it here. The last shall be first. (Laughter). Yeah, I've got Carpool Town Hall. Our president's lost control.
Wait, 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 wait.
Before we proceed, I'd just like to make a quick announcement. If you could, turn off your cell phones or turn them to silence, please, for the rest of the meeting. Thank you. Report from city offices, first meeting of the month, we do not have a report from the mayor's office, so we'll resolve into the committee of the hall. Motion to resolve? Oh, I'm sorry, Brian Polowski from the city's office is here. Sorry to interrupt. Miss you, Brian.
Motion to resolve in the committee of the hall?
Second. All in favor? All opposed? All right.
I would like to call the committee of the hall's order. The committee of the hall is where the common council sets to act committee. The title of each proposed ordinance is read by the city clerk, followed by a report from the committee chairperson of the standing committee, which held a public hearing on the bill. The chairperson announced the committee's advisory recommendation. If the proposed ordinance is a zoning ordinance, a report from area plan, staff members will first be given, followed by the petitioner, who will give a formal presentation at the podium. All other proposed ordinance, the formal presentation by the petitioner, will be given following the committee's chairperson's advisory recommendation. If there are any additional handouts that you would like to share with the council, we ask that you give it to the city clerk. No member of the public is permitted to approach the council members, and everyone is requested to stay behind the council railing at this time. Anyone in the chamber, as the president of the common council has indicated, we do ask that you turn off all of your electronic devices, and so that the business of the council can move forward. At this time, I would like to ask our city clerk, John Boardy, to give second reading to bill 06-15, please.
Public hearing on a bill amending the zoning ordinance for property located at 3408 Ardmore Trail and the vacant parcel west of the, excuse me, west of and adjacent to 3408 Ardmore Trail, South Bend, Indiana, councilmatic district number 2, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
I would like to entertain a motion to accept the substitute version of this bill.
Sub move. Second.
Has been moved in second. Are all those in favor of the motion, may I hear your vote?
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. I would like to have a report from the standing committee, zoning annexation.
Yes, our zoning annexation committee met this afternoon, and we bring this bill to you with a favorable report.
Thank you. At this time, we have a presentation from the area plan. We ask that you state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Matthew Chapius from the Area Plan Commission, with offices located on the 11th floor of this building. This is the Heroes Academy on Ardmore Trail, formerly a Target store and a thrift store. Petition is requesting a zone change from CB, Community Business District, to SF2, Single Family and Two Family District. Site is being downzoned because a school is not a permitted use in CB. This is view looking southeast from Ardmore Trail. The school will have a driveway aligned with Curtis Street. This is from Crass Boulevard. The site is a 9.9 acre site. The current structure is an 83,000 square foot vacant retail building. Proposed building would total 103,000 square feet. Site improvements would include a gymnasium and playgrounds to the west, a loading dock and trash enclosure along the south facade, reduced parking area, including queuing lanes to double, to double as overflow parking, and parking area screening will be provided by a combination of existing and future landscaping. The Area Plan Commission granted six variances to the site plan and sends this to you with a favorable recommendation. At this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Council members, do you have any questions at this time? Thank you so much for your presentation. At this time, we ask the petitioner to come before us, state your name and address, and give us a brief summary of bill 06-15, please.
Thank you. Mike Danch from Danch, Hunter and Associate, 1643 Thomas Drive here in South Bend, representing the Career Academy. And as Matthew has said, what we're asking for is just a downzoning so that we can actually open an elementary school. This will be a charter school. It'll have about 102,000 square feet. The elementary school will be probably K through, I think it's about seven or eight in that area. They're kind of basing it on what they want to do with this particular building. What we're also adding is a gymnasium to the existing structure, and also be some administrative offices as well. As Matthew mentioned, we're also going to be ripping out several thousand square feet of the existing parking area and putting in open space, and there'll also be like playground area toward the west side of the building, and there'll be trees around the perimeter. The staff had also asked us to do some additional landscaping for the parking areas off of Ardmore Trail so that there wouldn't be a jorthu from Ardmore Trail straight into the parking area. So we'll be doing that as well. What we would ask is, the council's favorable approval for this, they're expecting probably between probably 550 to 600 students at this particular facility, and with the amount of renovation they're doing, they're expecting to expend probably somewhere between $8 to $11 million in order to bring this building up to college for the school and for the additional facilities that they're adding. If you've got any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any question, Councilmember Davis?
Yes, Mr. Danch. For the record, I know we have some schools here in South Bend that do not really want their playgrounds to be utilized for the neighborhood, and what is the stance on the school when it comes down to after hours, when it's after school, or on the weekends, for the families and the children in the area that surrounds there, because there are several homes in that area, different apartments, Beacon Heights nearby, a lot of other families. I know from the children I go, I work with every day, they would love to be able to play out there in the facilities on the outside part, but what's their stance on that?
I think that that could, that can be made available for the neighborhood that's there, and I will let them know that as well. I don't see any trouble. I also was in that area for almost 20 years, so I know what you're talking about with the apartment complex, and there isn't a lot of recreational areas right at that until you get over to, I think it's Quiller School.
Yes.
So I will let them know that.
So Quiller, and then there's that area, of course, then there's Dixon up to Far. So all those children go right in that area.
But I'll make sure that they're aware of that.
I appreciate that.
So they can have that available for the neighborhood as well.
Thank you.
Good point. Any other questions from council members? If not, we thank you so much. We'll move now to the public hearing portion. This is an opportunity that anyone in the public, if you wish to come and speak in support of bill 06-15, we ask that you come to the podium, state your name and address, please.
Jerry Nisgowski, 1113 North Elliott. This is in the heart of our Neighborhood Association, the Linkway West Gateway Association. We're excited to see it. I did have some questions, and hopefully the gentleman who's just up here couldn't answer, and I think he did to an extent. I know that building, the old St. Vincent Paul building, one of the biggest hindrances to anybody moving in there was its roof. We heard it was anywhere from $500,000 to $1 million worth of rehab needed just on the roof alone. I'd like to have him speak to that specifically. As far as the playground, I agree with you, Councilman Davis. As far as Beacon Heights across the way, maybe we should get the management in here. They're beautiful people. Of course, that's sarcastic. The management took the playground out of Beacon Heights. They used to have it there.
Ridiculous.
So you have all these kids there and no playground.
I know.
They should, they should put it back in, personally.
I agree.
I mean, other housing, public housing structures and units here in South Bend, guess what? They have playground equipment. But it's the management, Beacon Heights, but I digress. We're excited about this coming out of the neighborhood. We hope it works well for them, and I would hope that you vote on it favorably.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to speak in support of this bill? Seeing no one. Is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition? Again, I see no one. The public hearing portion is not closed. We would like to ask Mr. Danch to come in and address the question in regards to the condition of the roof.
Yes, part of the renovation, that is going to be a major portion of it. So they will be fixing the roof for that whole structure. They're going to have to, since the renovations for the inside where all the administrative offices are in the classrooms, they would all be located on that portion of the building, so that will be most likely replaced and redone.
Thank you so much.
Yes. Question, and to, I can't hear Mr. Danch, we're not going to answer. Would there be something in writing that we could put together that says that we really strongly encourage the use of this neighborhood to, I mean, the facilities on the outside to be utilized for the neighborhood? Is there something, more so than just a conversation? Because I'm, I'm just concerned with the conversation piece, because as Mr. Nisgowski just said, I mean, that area is in need for some more help out there, and I think this is a great project, but I don't want us to get into the situation that we have for the certain school here, that I just don't really want to deal with that again. And is there something that we can put some teeth, I mean, some soft teeth, but some hard teeth, you know what I'm saying?
Councilmember Davis, we can send a copy of the certified minutes to the petitioner directly. That goes outside of the scope of the criteria that are needed for the zoning. But I, but again, I think a letter from you as the chair of zoning and annexation, as well as any other council member that would like to send that, and we'll copy Mr. Danch.
What I can try to do also, and I don't know if it's possible, when we do the site plan portion, that we have notes on there that are available, because the site plan's kind of a public portion for what we get approved through the building department, and it's reviewed by the city, and they put some notes on that as well, that that would be an open recreation area.
I appreciate that. I like that. Thank you, sir.
And I would like to also add that this would be a great opportunity for us, once again, to extend invitation to the management at Beacon Heights, to have a level of conversation with, with the council, and especially around this particular issue as well. So Councilman Davis, if you would like to-
I will.
Work on that, and we need to talk with them about a number of issues.
I understand.
And maybe looking around at children, that they would respond positively. At this time, are there any other questions that council members might have? If not, would like to entertain a motion?
Motion to send 615 to the full council, favorably?
Substitute.
Substitute, second.
Has been moved in second. Are all those in favor that we rescind the substitute bill 06-15 to the full council with the recommend, with a favorable recommendation? I hear your vote?
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Thank you so much. Mr. Boardy, would you please give second reading to bill 13-15, please?
Public hearing on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending Chapter 20 of the South Bend Municipal Code by deleting Article 13, Sections 20-130 through 20-135, addressing moped regulations, and amending Chapter 2, Article 19, Section Dash, or 2-Dash-213, addressing schedule of ordinance and code violations.
Thank you. The Health and Public Safety Committee have held a committee meeting this afternoon, and we send bill 13-15 to the full council with a favorable recommendation. We do have a petitioner before us. Would you please state your name and address, and give us a brief summary of this bill, please?
Tim Scott, 711 Forest Avenue, South Bend, Indiana. Real quick report on this is, we did a great job making a moped ordinance that the state of Indiana thought was good enough to make a state law, which they did. So we're rescinding our local law. And that's my-
Are there any questions of the council members? Seeing none. We're now move to the public hearing portion. Is there anyone present wishing to speak in support of bill 13-15? Seeing no one. Is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition? Again, I see no one. The public hearing portion is now closed.
No rebuttal?
No. I would like to entertain a motion?
Move this in 13-15 to the full council, favorably?
Second.
Has been moved in second. Are all those in favor? Those opposed, the motion carries. Let the record say that the state of Indiana has modeled their moped, moped, bill after city of South Bend.
That is correct.
To be in the record. Okay. Mr. Boardy, would you please give second reading to bill 17-15, please?
Public hearing on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, confirming compliance with Indiana Code 36-1-12-1, EDSEC, and rendering final approval of a guaranteed energy savings contract relating to Century Center, appropriating monies from Century Center Capital Improvement Fund, number 671, establishing a new fund, number 672, to be known as Century Center Energy Conservation Debt Service Fund, and taking all other action in connection therewith.
Before moving further with this, bill 17-15, I would like to have a motion to continue bill 14-15. Indefinitely. Indefinitely.
Second.
Has been moved in second. Are all those in favor of the motion? May I hear your vote?
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Now, we'd like to entertain a motion to accept the substitute version of bill 17-15.
Sub move, second.
Has been moved in second. Are all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Would like to entertain a committee report?
Committee report. Parks Committee today sends it to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. We'll now ask the petitioner or the petitioners to come before the council and to give us a summary of the bill that is before us at this time. We do ask that you state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Terrence Duro, City of South Bend, Director of Sustainability, offices on the 13th floor of the county city building and the Department of Public Works. I want to, we're here to discuss the ordinance approving the guaranteed energy conservation contract and related financing for the Century Center. Our team has worked really hard on this, and we're very excited to use innovative financing model to fund significant capital improvements to this very important centerpiece of our community with little and no expense to taxpayers. I'm going to introduce a couple of people who are very involved in the project to speak about specific aspects of the project for your information. First is going to be speaking Greg Downs, the president of the Century Center Board of Managers, to describe the project's scope and the benefits. Michael Schmidt, Assistant City Attorney, to describe the energy services agreement and how it had been reviewed. And John Murphy, the City Controller, to describe the financing structure and the financing terms that are being requested in the ordinance. And then finally, after everyone has given their presentation, I'll facilitate question and answer. I have Century Center City and contractor staff available to answer any additional questions that the four of us cannot answer. Thank you.
Good evening. Greg Downs, 101 North Michigan Street in downtown South Bend. I'll try and be brief. Almost two years ago, when we hired SMG to, for the new management of Century Center, they were kind enough to send a facilities manager from McCormick Place in Chicago over to spend two or three days in Chicago with our, or in South Bend with our staff, walking through the facility and building a comprehensive 30-year capital plan for Century Center. The good news is, the scope of this project will accomplish about 20% of that 30-year plan. Secondly, it is all work that we would have to do anyway over the next five, or 10, or 15 years. This is not stuff that's nice to do, it's stuff that we have to do. The third item I'd like to mention is that the total cost of the project is a little over $4.8 million. But because this is work that we would have to do anyway over the next several years, we are going to avoid about $6.3 million in capital costs over the next 15 years. So it's a win-win for the city. Because the project is so energy efficient, we have qualified for a qualified energy conservation bond, which will mean we'll be under 1% interest rate on this project. Secondly, the, the project is so energy efficient that we are going to save a guaranteed estimated amount of about $1.6 million in energy savings over the next 15 years. It starts at about $83,000 a year and goes up every year. The great thing about the project is that those savings are guaranteed financially. So in any one year, we don't realize those savings. Ameresco must replace those funds, make up the difference financially. Really an important point. The project was put together by the Century Center Board of Managers with the, with the help of the city of South Bend, obviously. It passed unanimously among the board of managers of Century Center. We then went to the motel, Hotel Motel Tax Board, who obviously provides a lot of the capital funding we need over the years. They gave us their unanimous approval. The funds to do the project, Century Center is going to put down a down payment of $750,000 plus another $50,000 that has to go into escrow. So that $800,000 is not going to-
Secondly, it is all work that we would have to do anyway over the next five, or 10, or 15 years. This is not stuff that's nice to do, it's stuff that we have to do. The third item I'd like to mention is that the total cost of the project is a little over $4.8 million, but because this is work that we would have to do anyway over the next several years, we are going to avoid about $6.3 million in capital costs over the next 15 years. So it's a win-win for the city. Because the project is so energy efficient, we have qualified for a qualified energy conservation bond, which will mean we'll be under 1% interest rate on this project. Secondly, the, the project is so energy efficient that we are going to save a guaranteed estimated amount of about $1.6 million in energy savings over the next 15 years. It starts at about $83,000 a year and goes up every year. The great thing about the project is that those savings are guaranteed financially. So in any one year, we don't realize those savings. Amoresco must replace those funds, make up the difference financially. Really an important point. The project was put together by the Century Center Board of Managers with the, with the help of the City of South Bend, obviously. It passed unanimously among the Board of Managers of Century Center. We then went to the motel, Hotel Motel Tax Board, who obviously provides a lot of the capital funding we need over the years. They gave us their unanimous approval. The funds to do the project, Century Center is going to put down, a down payment of $750,000 plus another $50,000 that has to go into escrow. So that $800,000 is not going to come out of the city budget, it's going to come out of cap, capital funding from the Century Center's budget from 2014 and 2015. The last thing I would mention is that, obviously, with our sales efforts at Century Center, we are doing our best to create more vitality in downtown South Bend. The sales staff is doing a great job. South Bend Alliance, which is all the major players in downtown South Bend that are trying to attract business downtown, every number we're looking at right now is up. Conventions, meetings, trade shows, you name it, everything is up. The people we are talking to, the people we're making sales pitches to, the meeting planners, continuing to ask us more and more questions about how energy efficient Century Center is, and that is really, really critical. The scope of the project is very broad, it's about $4.8 million in, in, in construction. We're replacing all seven roofs of Century Center, which is over 100,000 square feet. All those roofs have reached their maximum life, they're well over 20 years old. The roof over the art museum will accommodate a green roof, but that is planned for the future, we do not have the funding in place, but that roof will accommodate that green roof on top of it. We also are hopeful that we will get some grants from the state of Indiana to install solar panels, so the roof will also accommodate solar panels. We are replacing all the lighting in Century Center that has not already been replaced with energy efficient lighting, so new LED lighting. We're replacing all the HVAC systems controls and all the old motors, pumps, everything that's, that's not working very well. Lastly, we will replace all the ceiling tiles that have not yet been replaced in Century Center. This will make us not only energy efficient, but it will make us more competitive going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Schmidt, Assistant City Attorney, City of South Bend, 1200 County City Building, South Bend, Indiana. Echoing Mr. Downs' comments, it was my responsibility to negotiate the energy savings agreement with Amoresco. As Mr. Downs referenced, the contract itself is just under $5 million, at $4,855,897. The upfront fees to the City of South Bend are limited to 10%, and then the rest of the payment program is based upon completion of work by Amoresco and its subcontractors. The term of the agreement is 15 years. There's a necessary protections to the city as far as termination and out causes. As Mr. Downs referenced, the improvements, you know, covers the roofing, the lighting, upgrades to these current systems and replacements, HVAC, and ceiling tiles. First year alone, the savings are estimated to be about $450,000, and each year that savings goes up. The only sort of ongoing expense that has not been spoke about is that each year there will be a monitoring and verification by Amoresco to confirm that the systems that are being installed are functioning correctly and are delivering the savings that they've guaranteed to the City of South Bend. That first year expense is $5,696. Each year that expense over 15 years goes up by about $150, $200 a year, so it's very minimal ongoing expenses for the type of savings that have been guaranteed.
John Murphy, City Controller, with offices on the 12th floor of this building. Greg covered the financing terms pretty well, I just had a few additional comments. The city financing and administration team is very supportive of this process. The eligibility and the idea to go for a qualified energy conservation bond, that was brought to us by Amoresco, so they added a lot of value in that. We were able to qualify for an interest rate that's going to be below 1%, which is kind of unheard of, really, in traditional bond financing, so we're very grateful for that. The other piece that Greg referred to is the Hotel Motel Tax Board has been good to Century Center over the years, has done other bond issuances for us as well. There's one from, originally from 1993, which was refunded in 2011, of $150,000 a year that's rolling off in 2017, and the first payment on this, this contract will begin in 2018, so we thought that was a good, a good timing on how we wanted to structure this contract. So overall, we're, we're very pleased with how the, it's been kind of a struggle, because we had, we had to go to the Indiana Financing Department, Financing Authority to get the approval and so forth, and there's been some zigs and zags, but we're really pleased with how this contract is coming together. Be happy to answer any questions that you have.
I'm going to let them do their presentation now.
Our presentation is complete, and we're happy to take any questions.
Okay, I'm going to start with Councilmember Gavin Furley, can just go straight down to the line. Any questions? Councilmember Davis?
Thank you. Mr. Murphy? You said that you had to go before the state. Could you clarify that, and what they decided regarding the interest rates?
We had to qualify for this QECB program, so we had to submit an application to qualify as an energy conservation bond, as an application. So Amoresco and our bond council, and our own Terrence, and our own city staff worked on that application, and we were able to qualify for that.
You were able to do that? When did that take place, do you know?
A couple of months ago.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Councilmember Scott?
Nobody.
Councilmember Furley?
Greg and John, you said that basically this covers five years of a 30-year project, about 20% of what you anticipate, and it's $5 million, basically, 4.8. So are you anticipating over the next 20, 30 years, I know it's a long way to project, but 25 million? If this is 20%, are you projecting, is that what it's, I'm talking, like, all projects in the city always fast forward, so I'm just wondering what, you know, I think you've done a great job, by the way, but is that what you anticipate, Greg, in the 20, 25 million?
I don't think we should just anticipate that we're going to do additional of these bonds. We'll have to see how it goes the next five to 10 years. Typically, what we've done is we've done, hey, as you go financing for Century Center through the Hotel Motel Tax Board, it's been providing some capital, and then we've also had some internal capital generated through our own funds. So it's, it's hard to predict right now what we're going to do, I think we're not anticipating that we're necessarily going to bond.
No, but I was just wondering about the overall expense, how you came up with the 20%? So there's another 80% you have to come-
It's 20% of the work-
Right.
In that 30-year plan.
Right.
I think an important point here, Fred, is that for the first time in years, we're actually getting ahead of the capital improvements needed. We've been playing catch-up. We've been fixing elevators that should have been fixed five, eight, nine years ago. We've been fixing stuff as they break. Now we're finally going to get ahead of the curve a little bit. That's going to reduce our maintenance costs, as well as our labor costs internally, and make us more competitive. I would certainly hope we're going to avoid some of those costs in that 30-year plan because of what we're doing now and the way we're doing it.
Great. Thank you. I commend you for your great work. Thank you.
Councilmember Shea?
Thank you, Chairman White. Thank you both. I had asked my questions in committee earlier, and they had mainly to do about the financing, so thank you.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes, thank you. We received a sheet, thank you. We see four from South Bend, two from San Joe County, and one from elsewhere, says Indianapolis. My next question is, given all of these companies, is the WBE-MBE program, would that be satisfied or taken into account with the jobs that are going to be available for construction?
I, I don't know, I, I haven't been part of that, part of the process.
We haven't had that conversation yet, but certainly there's as much flexibility as the subcontractors, subcontractors have, then we can tap into that flexibility.
Well, we're supposed to be part of the conversation, you guys bitted it out, you know, it's a state law.
Well, this, this was actually bitted out a year and some months ago.
That law has been, I was the co-sponsor, but we've had that law here probably for the better part of two or three years. Or more.
Right, so we were bidding the energy services company, of which there are not that many, and they're mostly large, or internet, or large national companies, and so that was who, what the public bidding process was a part of. However, we've been very fortunate that Amoresco is interested in being a partner with us and helping us achieve our local procurement goals, and so I can make a point to have that conversation with them about seeking out, especially with their subcontractors and as labor has selected MBE-WBE opportunities. So we'll keep that conversation going throughout the project.
Well, we'd like to see it happen, just not only the conversation. I think these things, and I'm not coming down on you, I see you're new to the position and what have you, but we've been having these conversations for a number of years, probably decades, well, I'm sure it's been decades. And as I've only been on council for seven years, I've seen the frustration from our local contractors, especially if they are of WBE-MBE minority contractors, not getting a fair shake or opportunity at public jobs. And so this one is not as, as big as the street changes, it still lends itself to that same type of scrutiny. And so I would love to see anything that the petition would be put on paper or made aware to this council, not after only the conversation happens, but that someone has been hired, or several people have been hired to participate on this job.
I'm happy to document our efforts to identify anyone that we can find that can fulfill the roles that we have.
Okay, thank you. And again, I'm not coming down on you, it's just something that, you know, we've been working at forever, and it just seems never to happen, so hopefully, you're the first probably actually to engage us in conversation about it, so thank you so much.
Happy to follow up on that.
That'd be great.
If there's any other questions from the councilmembers, we'll now move to the public hearing portion. Is there anyone present wishing to speak to the substitute version of Bill 17-15? Seeing no one, is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition to this bill? Again, I see no one. The public hearing portion is now closed. Councilmembers, what is your pleasure?
Motion to approve. Me, I'm-
Recommended.
Recommended.
The substitute bill.
That's correct.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of the motion, I hear your vote?
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Substitute Bill 17-15 will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. I will now ask for motion to rise and report to the common council.
So moved, second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries.
Full council is now back in session. John Boyd, would you give third reading to 06-15?
Third reading on a bill amending the zoning ordinance for property located at 3408 Ardmore Trail and the vacant parcel west of and adjacent to 3408 Ardmore Trail, South Bend, Indiana, Councilmanic District Number Two, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
A motion to amend, as it was in the committee of the whole.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion to accept.
Motion to accept.
No.
On time.
Motion to pass.
Second.
Mr. Boyd?
Mr. Henry Davis?
Who was that?
Aye. Mrs. Shea?
Aye.
Dr. Furley?
Aye.
Mr. Oliver Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
President Tim Scott?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Mr. Boyd, 13-15.
Third reading on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending Chapter 20 of the South Bend Municipal Code by deleting Article 13, Sections 20-130 through 20-135, addressing moped regulations, and amending Chapter 2, Article 19, Section 2-Dash-213, addressing schedule of ordinance and code violations.
Motion for passage?
Second.
Mrs. Shea?
Aye.
Dr. Furley?
Aye.
Mr. Oliver Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis?
Aye.
And President Tim Scott?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Boyd, 17-15, please.
Third reading on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, confirming compliance with Indiana Code 36-1-12-1, EDSEC, and rendering final approval of a guaranteed energy savings contract relating to Century Center, appropriating monies from Century Center Capital Improvement Fund, Number 671, establishing a new fund, Number 672, to be known as the Century Center Energy Conservation Debt Service Fund, and taking all other action in connection therewith.
A motion to amend, as it was in the committee of the whole.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion, motion for passage?
Second.
Dr. Furley?
Aye.
Mr. Oliver Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis?
Aye.
Mrs. Shea?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
And now we'll move to the resolution portion of our meeting. Resolutions, this portion of the council meeting is where common council hears bills filed as proposed resolutions. The title of each proposed resolution is read by the city clerk. A report from the committee chairperson of the standing committee, which there was referred to, for advisory review, and a recommendation is then given. If the proposed resolution is requesting a zoning special exception, a report from the building partner, Building Department, will first be given, followed by the petitioner who is giving a formal presentation at the podium. If the proposed resolution is requesting a tax abatement, a report from the city's Community Investment Department will be given, followed by the petitioner giving a formal presentation at the podium. On all other proposed resolutions, formal presentations by the petitioners will be given immediately after the committee chairperson's report. Following the formal presentation, councilmembers may ask preliminary questions only, all of the council comments we've heard during the council portion. During the public portion, each proposed resolution, members of the public are invited to address the council. Please give your name and address and comments on the bill. If you have any questions, they will be addressed by the presenter during the rebuttal. Each member of the public is limited to five minutes, with the those speaking in favor going first, followed by the opposition, then five-minute rebuttal for the presenter of the bill. John Boyd, would you read the first resolution?
1517, a resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, approving a petition of the Area Board of Zoning Appeals for the property located at 609 LaSalle Street, South Bend, Indiana, 46617.
Committee report?
All those, the zoning and analysis committee met, and we bring this to you. We didn't have a report because of the petitioner was not there.
No recommendation.
No recommendation.
Okay.
But now he's here. Do we have to have a public hearing inside of his separate, or do you just go with the regular one?
We'll just go forward.
Okay, cool.
Mark Lyons, the Building Department, Office at 125 South Bend Boulevard. This is a special exception request that will occur for the Area Board of Zoning Appeals on February 19, 2015. It's a special exception request to allow an off-street parking lot. This is the former car wash site across the street from St. Joe Parish. It comes with the unanimous favorable recommendation. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Nope. Would you please state your name and address, and give us a quick report?
Yes, thank you. William Linney, Alliance Architects, 929 Lincoln Way, East, South Bend, Indiana. I'm here representing St. Joe Parish. The parish is very excited about fulfilling a five-year master plan that we've been working with them on. Their initial parcel was fairly landlocked, at 3.3 acres. They've had a huge need for additional recreational space, both interior gymnasium-type space, additional classroom space, and a more improved outdoor playground space. Their committees and their leadership have been not quite insightful, they've, they've recognized that if, if immediate properties were available, they should aggressively go after them. I did provide a site plan that calls out three parcels. Parcel A is the special exception use that we're going after, but they've been able to secure those additional properties, one to the east, the one to the north that Mr. Lyons just spoke about- What, what it, what it meant was is they were losing onsite parking spaces. To the immediate east of the property is their new parish center, the Ackle Center. And there are, although we haven't included those in the official tally legally, there are seventy spaces over there that are used, sparingly, probably twenty spaces daily are used for normal school activity. The sixty-nine that we're getting on the north property will give us a total of a hundred and fifty-four parcels. Uh, the parish, uh, was asked by the diocese of Fort Wayne, South Bend, to do a census. All the parishes locally were, were, uh, participated. And in that, it was to look at all of their use, uh, both their daily school use and their after-hour use, uh, and weekend use in particular. Uh, the numbers that we got were terrific numbers because we could directly use those as the basis to satisfy, at least justify, the parking, uh, that's available. So we feel strongly that there's more than adequate parking, uh, and we, uh, we thank you for your consideration. Any questions?
Any questions from council members? Seeing none, we'll open it up to the public portion. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come to the podium now. Seeing none, anybody wishing to speak against this resolution, please come to the podium. Seeing none, come back to council.
Might I ask you a question?
Oh, yes, go ahead.
This is the parcel directly north of, uh, is that directly north of St. Joe Grade School? Or is it now directly north of the parish? Okay. Kathy, I might need to make a disclosure. I work for a company that does have a property interest on that parcel. Um, I can't imagine that, um, it's an easement. I can't imagine that it impacts myself financially.
If the disclosure is made, you can still participate.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll bring it back to council. Anything else?
Motion to accept. Motion to adopt, adoption, second.
Mr. Boardy.
Uh, Mr. Oliver Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Furley.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mrs. Shea.
Aye.
Dr. Furley.
Aye.
And President Scott.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you. Fifteen twenty-two, Mr. Boardy.
A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, pledging its interest in the developments proposed by the Pocahontas Band of Potawatomi Indians, and recognizing our strategic and vital partnership with Indiana's only federally recognized tribe in the state. Thank you.
The Community Relation Committee held a public hearing on, uh, Resolution fifteen, uh, fifteen dash twenty-two, and will send it to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Chairperson White, for that.
Thank you, President Scott, Chairwoman White. There's a popular business, um, before I say that, I'm Oliver Davis, the sixth district representative, eighteen oh one Nastri, South Bend. Uh, there's a popular business which is also represented by the number that I serve on the council, that says, "We will leave the light on, welcoming." We, together as a council, have welcomed Nellow Plant, which, over the coming years, is going to bring us over six hundred jobs. We have welcomed the health facility of Western Avenue, which is really coming together. We have welcomed Lipbridge, when A.J. Wright went down, we have welcomed them. We have welcomed, we're still noted, and they're thirty-six million dollars to the sixth district. We have welcomed the new energy plant, when they came to bring in jobs when the ethanol plant closed. We have welcomed Gator Realty, when they are now bringing in jobs. And several years ago, we welcomed Prairie Apartments, over some interesting challenges, which they have now come out to be a wonderful addition to our council and to our city. And speaking about Prairie Apartments, when I was there, just a month ago, for my monthly six district council meetings in that area, several of the residents said, "We need to do something to make sure that we welcome our Pocahontas Band of Indians to our area." And so I talked to them, we had a whole hour discussion that night, and they're, um, property managers here tonight, and we said, "Well, uh, after we discussed that, we said, 'We should do something, we are going to be their neighbors.'" And we are right here, right off Prairie Street, and, um, right over the Locust area, I said, "Let me bring that back to the council." So as you clearly know, two weeks ago, I talked to you all, and I said, "Uh, we need to do something, talk to Mayor Pete." And so we have come up with our resolution, again, to turn our lights on in the sixth district. And our resolution reads as follows. Whereas the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, recognizes that on January fourteenth, two thousand thirteen, the common council adopted Resolution four two two eight dash thirteen, which approved a petition of the area board of zoning appeals for the property located at thirty-seven thirty-three Locust Street, South Indiana, after received a unanimous favorable recommendation on the request from the AVZA. And whereas the two thousand thirteen petition requested a special exemption for the Locust Street property to permit a governmental facility, the Indiana Tribal Government Office of the Pocahontas Band of Potawatomi Indians, a federally recognized Native American tribe, with a service area in the state of Indiana, and whereas the common council further recognizes that the Pocahontas Band of Potawatomi Indians is the only federal-recognized Indiana tribe, and further notes that the Locust Street property in South Bend provides needed administrative services to area tribal citizens, with testimony at the AVZA meeting noting that we do have a high concentration of Pocahontas citizens in the South Bend area. Northern Indiana, about five hundred, so we think, that our data would show that we would probably triple that, serving sixty to ninety citizens a month in our building. Some of these services we would provide are tutoring for our young students, enrollment into our programs, our educational programs, housing, financial empowerment, and social services. And whereas the Pocahontas Band of Potawatomi Indians has made enormous strides to further economic development, to develop tribal infrastructure and resources, and to improve healthcare, housing, education, and elderly service to its citizens, and has made its priority to develop language and cultural programs for its citizens, to fully engage the Pocahontas community in the cultural heritage and traditional life ways of the Pocahontas people, which benefit the Indian and non-Indian communities alike. And whereas the common council further notes that the Pocahontas Band recognition of its importance of maintaining a strong, self-sustaining government and strategic partnerships with state and local governments has only continued to grow over the years, which has resulted in sustained collaboration and positive involvement. Now therefore, be resolved by the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, as follows. Section one, very important here, the South Bend Common Council is proud to recognize that the Pocahontas Band of Potawatomi Indians has a ten-county service delivery area with four counties in southwest Michigan, and six counties namely St. Joseph, La Porte, Elkhart, Stark, Marshall, and Caziasco in Indiana, which includes much of their ancestral and historical lands, with the largest population concentration remaining in the vicinity of the traditional villages of the St. Joe River Valley, near the towns of Dewajak and Harshville, Michigan, and South Bend, Indiana. Section two, the common council recognizes considerable potential benefit to the city from a proposed tribal village and related developments near Run Village in the sixth district Councilmatic District in South Bend. The Pocahontas Band's vision includes housing units, healthcare service areas, tribal government facilities, hotels, apartments, meeting and conference facilities, a gaming facility, a parking garage, while potentially creating an estimated fourteen hundred construction jobs and two thousand permanent jobs, which will represent an increased jobs in St. Joe County by two point nine percent. Section three, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its adoption by the common council and approval by the mayor of South Bend. And instead, you know, with the conference facilities, one of the key mentions, um, topics that we had at our meeting was the issue of conference facilities. In that area, we need to have more conference facilities. And on this past Friday, several of the businesses in that area, our pizza business there and many others right there, got together, we had pizza, and we welcomed our neighbors, and, uh, we really want to bring, um, a neighborly atmosphere as we turn on the lights for them in this area. We've turned it on for many other of our diverse districts. I remember when we had, the health facility had the challenges just a few years, um, Dr. Furley and Henry Davis, we talked about that last time, when we worked with, uh, Hispanic population at that facility out there. And we worked with them. That's the same facility now that's being developed on Western Avenue. And so we have had a friendly attitude and we are welcoming attitude, and that's what we are here tonight to present. And I thank you for your presentation this afternoon, thank you for your comments, and I look forward to more tonight.
Thank you. Any questions for the petitioner here?
Questions only, or?
Questions only. Nope. Seeing none, we'll open up to the public.
Yes, 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 yes.
Question, Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Junior?
Yes, sir, thank you. Uh, Mr. Davis, I like saying that. Mr. Davis.
Sir.
Hey, um, just real quick, this resolution is, uh, could you explain to us exactly, uh, the reason for the mission of the resolution?
One of the things that we heard, um, in our neighborhood meetings that we had just two weeks ago, Prairie Apartments, that there was some concerns with people having, um, some negative views toward the Pocahontas Band of Indians, which may even lead them to consider other areas to host their place. And our neighbors said that we wanted to bring in something that would show that we wanted to welcome them. And so therefore, we have put together a resolution to bring welcoming. It does not in any way commit us to anything in terms of the business negotiations that has with the city. That is going on now with the administration and with the negotiations. We have left that separate, we had the mayor's team to review it. The mayor, um, teams reviewed everything, they sent it back down to us. Mayor Pete and, uh, his team reviewed everything, and they sent it back down to us with, um, all the different changes, and we submitted that to you. So again, it's a way, and a key point in section two, it says, "We recognize a potential benefit to the city from a proposed tribal village and related developments near Run Village." I have had the privilege of going up to Dewajak, and I saw the housing developments in that area. And I saw all of the different areas in the conference room that they have, the conference facilities there, and I saw all of that. When you look at a situation that we are having here, proposed situation, not only of the jobs, but the ripple effects that can happen in our area, the different small businesses to the larger businesses that can come up on the, uh, state twenty-three corridor there. And that's one of the things that so many people in the neighborhood who live in that area want to see developed, that state corridor twenty-three, um, to look at that and have that, as an access right to bypass to come into the city of South Bend. Because as we look at all the graduations and Notre Dame games and many other things, we would have more activities and more resources for our community. So I really think this is something great. Yes, sir?
So, this is just saying, welcome, we want you here, thank you for your interest. And any other conversations that, uh, need to happen, obviously need to happen with the mayor as it relates to casinos possibly happening, the village itself happening, right?
But we need to look at that, I know, they will be having some more meetings, they've already publicly announced that in the media, and, um, in other publications, that will be going on in Century Center tomorrow night. Um, so, but you have to realize, when it comes down to, um, tribal land, um, after United States Constitution, it's, um, the Constitution talks about the United States, and it talks about our role to our Native Americans. And it clearly looks at both areas there, because of the whole way our country was created. And so therefore, those issues regarding the control of what we can or cannot do, that is up to their own government. And so, and that's what some of the negotiations that I am aware of, will be looking at how their government works along with our police department, how they work along with our judicial system, our educational system, and many others that go along with it, plus with the businesses that are located in the area, to help promote those, as we talked about in other discussions. Yes, sir. Any other questions?
Any other questions? Okay, we'll open up to the public portion. Thank you, y'all. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of Resolution fifteen twenty-two, please come to the podium now, give your name and address, you have five minutes. I'll ask Gavin Furley to time, you will please. When he's ready.
Jesse Davis, P.O., Box ten, two oh five, South Bend, Indiana. Uh, I'm in favor of welcoming, welcoming them here. Uh, our mayor, as a matter of fact, last week said, "Hey, we welcome everybody." We all know there's a big elephant in the room, and this is all about a casino. Nobody in this room is, is dumb. Bottom line is, that casino's going to create jobs, it's going to create revenue in this city. People have argued about the crime, come on, look at our crime, we already got it here. It, it doesn't make any difference. So, you know, it, it really seems that since the Indians will control what they're building, what they're doing on their land, probably who the contractors are who do the building, it just looks to me like maybe some people are upset because they don't have control like they do in most projects here. But I think this is a great thing. Uh, I've been to both of their casinos in New Buffalo and in Dewajak, I've been through their village in Dewajak, I did some work up there for about three weeks. Seem to be a great thing that they got going on up there, I think it'll be great for us. And, uh, we need to promote people being here.
Thank you. Next, please state name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Sherry Richmond, and I live at ten fifteen South Glassone Avenue in South Bend, Indiana. And the reasons why citizens should be for putting a casino in South Bend, if having a casino in South Bend, Indiana can create two thousand-plus jobs, I'm all for it. Each and every time some citizens in South Bend leave their homes, they are confronted with panhandlers begging for money, food, and shelter. Anytime there are human beings laying on sidewalks because there are no jobs and they are homeless is not a good thing and not a good look for our city. Bringing the casino here and creating jobs could help others achieve the American dream that we were talking about as little children. It gives citizens hope for the future and makes them feel better about themselves when they are employed. I know for a fact, because I've been unemployed and it's no fun. They say that South Bend is a dying, demising city. South Bend City sign, it says that it represents the twenty-first century. But I can tell that it does, yes, Mission Walker looks like it represents the twenty-first century, but South Bend has fallen short in that area. We don't even have a shopping mall anymore in South Bend. We have to do most of our shopping, entertainment, and dining in the city of Mission Walker. South Bend is the fourth-largest city in Indiana. We should have more to offer people that visit and live here.
Amen.
When students finish college education in South Bend, they leave because this city has nothing to offer them, no jobs and no entertainment. So they leave along with, uh, with other citizens. You have to make businesses, you have to make businesses want to open up here. You have to make people want to work and live here. Bringing a casino will not only generate jobs, but bring other businesses to our area. Once they see that South Bend is booming, they will want to get on board. Everyone likes making money. A casino will bring positive revenue to our city. Charity starts at home. Why keep building up other cities by patronizing their casinos? We should keep our money in our city. Citizens waste gas money driving to other cities to support their casinos. Citizens take buses and carpool over to other cities to support their casinos. All of that money could be generated and stay right here in our hometown of South Bend, Indiana. We complain about not having enough money in our city, yet some of us want to turn, turn down money that could be used towards building up our city and our neighborhoods. One of the main reasons why crime rates go up is because of the lack of employment. People feel that they have to beg, steal, or kill for what they want. If building a casino here in South Bend, Indiana can bring two thousand-plus jobs, why would you not welcome that? They have a better chance of finding employment. Mom and pop small businesses have nothing to worry about, as long as they have great service and treat their customers well, they will still have their loyal customers who will tell their neighbors, sitting next to them at the slot machines, about your business. And your businesses too, will take off in a positive way. People in closing keep a positive mind in building a casino here in South Bend, because like it or not, casinos bring huge fundings to other people's cities, and they could bring huge fundings to ours. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, name and address, please.
My name is Samuel Brown. I live at two 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 East DeVries Street, the city of South Bend. I represent a watchdog group called Citizens United for a Better Government. I am in favor of welcoming the Pocahontas Band of Indians, and whatever endeavor they're going to do, because it seems like they got a solid track record from New Buffalo, and the various other ventures. But this is all I ask, for once this is passed, we can go back to changing. There's a lot of questions out there. I would like for the council and everyone to make sure that when we pass this, that we got the facts. I am for anything that'll make our city a better. from New Buffalo and the various other ventures. But this is all I ask. The worst is to get passed. We can't go back to changing. There's a lot of questions out there. I would like for the council and everyone to make sure that when we pass this, that we got the facts. I am for anything that'll make our city a better place. We didn't have enough failure in South Bend. Hall of Fame, uh, the lottery, several change our city, our state. I don't know the facts. The gentleman right here has promised me that he was going to give me the facts. And I want to know what we give him to before we try and say, uh, help me just open up for the city of South Bend. I'm for anyone who's going to come in here and make our city a better place. And the citizens feel the same way I do. But we didn't have a lot of letdowns. And all I ask is that we give the facts and make it sure that what's said now for these resolutions to be passed will be the gospel. Uh, far as what the mayor says, track record ain't no good for me. As far as what he said, his word don't carry a lot of weight. So, I'm serious about that. I could go on and on, but I won't do that. I just want the facts. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, name and address, please.
Um, Tye M. Chin, twenty-six Booty Prairie Avenue, South Bend, Indiana. I would like to welcome, uh, the casino, the residents of Prairie as well as Bill Howensworth, the owner of Prairie Apartments and Hoffman Hotel Artist Apartments, and Flaherty and Collins out of Indianapolis who manages Prairie. Um, we think this will be a good opportunity for some of our residents as far as jobs. A lot of our residents have looked for, um, employment and they haven't been able to find. I had the opportunity to talk to them on Friday, asked them about the qualifications. Um, as long as they had a high school diploma, a lot of our residents, um, are working on their DED and don't have the means to get, go to college degrees. This would be a perfect opportunity for them. So, we would like to welcome them to the community. And we one hundred percent support them.
Okay, thank you. Next, name and address, please.
Jerry Niskowski, eleven thirteen North Elliott, South Bend, Indiana. Uh, I'd like to speak in favor of this resolution welcoming the Pocahontas Band of Potawatomi Indians to South Bend. For those of you on the council who may not be from South Bend originally or are too young to remember a little bit of history lesson, Town and Country Shopping Center. South Bend had an opportunity to annex that into South Bend. Let it go. Mission Walker got it. University Park Mall was originally proposed to be at the corner of Portage and Cleveland Roads where Meyer is. Now, we said no. Then they moved out to where they are now. We had an opportunity to extend, uh, utilities and annex that, said no. Now we have this. This is going to happen somewhere. Why not let it happen here? I say let's, uh, as the resolution says, let's roll out the welcome map. Welcome, uh, the Pocahontas Band of Potawatomi Indians. They have a fantastic record with their developments around the area and giving back to the community. Uh, they've done a lot with nonprofits, with municipalities, and they are very, uh, hospitable to not only their tribespeople, but to, to the greater community at large. So, I hope when the time comes, when all the details are finished, that, uh, when it comes time to actually vote for this project, that the same attitude prevails at that time and we say yes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak against fifteen twenty-two, please come to the podium now. Give your name and address. You have five minutes to speak. Each person, Gavin Furlik will turn here.
Barbara Jewell, eight twenty-one Garchner Avenue, South Bend, Indiana. And I'm against the casino, not against the Potawatomi Indians who've had a good relationship with Notre Dame since the eighteen hundreds. But I don't think a casino is what we need in this area. First of all, I don't know how many people are aware of this, but Indians do not pay taxes so we have no tax money coming back into our community. Second of all, with this village that's going to be built, that's wonderful. However, if you consider the fact that in a hotel and all the entertainment and everything that's needed, the money's going to stay there. It's not necessarily going to come out into our community. So, there'll be a loss of rent of revenue there. Um, a lot of the jobs will be Indian jobs, which is fine. That's wonderful. But it's, it's not going to help the other, uh, sections of our community. So, basically that's it. I really am very much against it. I think gambling promotes, uh, advice that doesn't need to be promoted any more than it is. And there are also the two casinos that are very close to our area. So, is there oversaturation of it? And that's basically it.
Okay, thank you. Next, please name, state name and address.
Good evening. My name is Keith DeShrock, founder of Lord Marketing, based here in South Bend. Number one for South Bend marketing, South Bend advertising. We also have South Bend Investment Property Interests and, uh, number one on Google. We live and reside at two oh five North Hill Street. That is in Mission Walker currently. Have owned many properties here in South Bend and have an interest in the community and show up here quite often. First of all, I'd like to say that this particular item was rushed, in my opinion, and in public's opinion, uh, before this body. Second of all, it will reduce tourism and monies to this community, clearly. It also would increase, increase the criminal activity and decrease public safety in those areas of the casino. We're not against housing or anything that may be affiliated with helping that people. Uh, we wanted to do something for the Pocahontas. Uh, it was suggested that we kill Columbus Day and, uh, and have Indigenous People Day a few weeks back.
Yes, sir.
My son-in-law, yeah, on a personal level, is, uh, First Nations people so I don't have anything against that people group. I am for removing walls between ethnic groups, positive in that area. I attend a church that is very multicultural. Uh, I would like to see all the walls taken down, including, uh, going back to Black Indians, which you may not know. Uh, you can Google those. Uh, I would propose further study, including T-Bar chart with positives and negatives documented before the public on this item. And thousands of jobs are posted by, um, Representative Jackie Walorski on Facebook and I share those quite frequently. The path to rebuild South Bend is through tech, through education, and the solution is not a gambling casino, with the shadowy things that happen with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, name and address, please.
Yeah, uh, Jake Teschardt, uh, one nine four eight nine Greenacre, South Bend. Um, I guess, first of all, I'd like to, um, you know, with all due respect to Councilman Davis, um, there's a lot of public discussion out, going on, uh, about this issue. Um, I don't think that, uh, the folks that are opposed to a casino are opposed to, um, the Pocahontas Band, nor do they have negative feelings towards the Pocahontas Band. Uh, I for one, um, would like to also welcome the Pocahontas Band and leave the light on for them. Uh, if we're talking about housing, if we're talking about a medical facility, if we're talking about government facilities, uh, even some retail space, uh, some other means of, of income for the tribe, uh, that's great. Uh, those are things that would be great for, for our community as a whole. Uh, in terms of a casino, however, um, that's something that, that, uh, quite frankly, I think would have a negative effect on our community. Uh, a lot of the talk has been, uh, so far tonight about jobs. Uh, and I think that we need to weigh, uh, some things when we look at jobs. I think, you know, sure, there may be some, some jobs created by, by a gaming facility. However, I think there'll also be some jobs lost. We look at a case study of Atlantic City. Uh, before nineteen seventy-seven, um, there were two hundred and thirty-two eating and drinking establishments, so bars and restaurants, locally owned, uh, places there. Uh, nineteen eighty-one, three years after casinos began operating in that city, uh, there, that number had declined to a hundred and sixty. And then a few years later, uh, the number had, had declined again to a hundred and forty-two. Um, and so, the idea that this type of facility won't push out smaller businesses in our area, uh, I think is false. You know, the, the casino becomes a one-stop shop for, for dining, entertainment, and lodging. And, uh, for folks going to the casino, especially folks from outside of our community, there would be no incentive for them to visit our, uh, great downtown establishments. There'd be no, no reason for them to go to, uh, a game, uh, and see the, the South Bend Cubs or go to a show at the Morris because all the entertainment and the lodging and the meals that they eat would be at the casino. Um, I'd also like to, um, echo what Mr. Shrock said, uh, and just say that this whole thing, uh, this resolution here has seemed rushed. I just found out about this last week. Um, and I think we need to have a broader public discussion, uh, on this issue. It's something that's going to impact us all and not just South Bend, actually. It's going to impact, uh, our surrounding communities, our surrounding counties. Um, you know, I think we need to have a broader discussion about this and weigh the facts before we, before we get into this thing, before, uh, the council, um, you know, wholeheartedly supports this. Uh, I know that, uh, there was some questioning between Councilmember Davis and Councilmember Davis earlier, um, regarding whether or not this resolution is about the casino. Uh, but in the resolution, um, that, uh, Councilman Oliver Davis read, uh, it talked about the gaming facility. And so, this resolution does, uh, speak to the casino. Um, you know, we, earlier tonight, we recognized all of the, the great folks who, who are working hard to help children in our area. And, um, when you look at the social effects of, of a casino like this, you know, the, um... In a fourteen-month period spanning nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand, uh, there were seventy-two children that were abandoned at Indiana Casinos. Uh, that could have been in a car or a parking garage or, or otherwise. Seventy-two children, uh, within the span of fourteen months were abandoned at casinos. Uh, the Bureau of Indian Affairs in their draft environmental impact statement admitted themselves that casinos, uh, increase, um, problem gambling, which would then leads to typically an increase in bankruptcies, divorces, uh, and also suicides.
I'm sure you have one minute.
Okay. There's just so much, man. Um, the crime studies also show that crime increases, uh, ten percent in areas with casinos. And with all due respect to Jesse, um, an increase in crime is an increase in crime. And yes, we already have crime here, but we need to be seeking out a decrease for that, not an increase. Um, you know, and, and, uh, you've got, uh, the University of Illinois publishes studies showing that major consumer businesses avoid, uh, areas with casinos just as they would high-crime areas. Uh, you've got studies that show that gambling is a predatory industry. The casinos derive between, uh, depending on where they're at, uh, the location and size, derive, uh, between thirty-five and fifty-five percent of their revenues from problem gamblers, from a lot of folks who, um, don't have the means to gamble, who go hoping to hit it, hit it big and leave without rent and leave without milk money for the week. Uh, this is an industry that I, I think that we don't want in our community. And I would just ask you guys to, to research this, uh, to, to weigh the facts, maybe postpone this resolution. And, uh, I see Mr. Furlik is cutting me off now, but I would just ask that you guys will put this off. Maybe, uh, let's have a broader public discussion about this before.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next, name and address, please.
Joseph Michael Chassar, Jr., thirty-ten South Locust Road. I live right across the street from it and the city of South Bend is trying to welcome a man. I don't have a problem with that. Like him, I have a problem with the casino. South Bend wants a welcome. I've lived there for over thirty years. The first seventeen years I lived there and the person I bought it from, South Bend did nothing to the street. Called nine-one-one, we were told we don't even know where South Locust Road is. They tried to change the name of the street. The people banded together to pull out of South Bend. They came up and tore up the street and put in city water, sewer, and sidewalks in three sections. So, each year, I gotta drive four miles twice a day extra. Then, when they put in the sidewalk, they, at the one area, they didn't do all the sidewalks on all the area. They told me they couldn't put it on the edge of the street. Well, how come in my yard it comes and then goes right to the edge of the street for the next neighbor? Because they didn't want to fill in anything. They wanted to take out property from me. I said, you do that, my neighbor next to me is going to walk out of his front door and fall two hundred feet to the ground. I said, put in a retaining wall. Oh, we can't do that. I said, I got a double-wide driveway. Oh, you only get one. I can't pull out of my driveway. My life is perpetually endangered and my grandchildren and anyone that wants to drive out of my driveway trying to get out on South Locust Road. When they plowed the snow, if they had put the sidewalk there, which they did in other spots of the street, I could have plowed that. I can't see over it. When I asked them, I said, look, a road is straight, right? How come in front of my house it angles over on half my property? The hydrological effect they did, this is the Cankey Key Valley area. One-fifth of the birds in the whole planet Earth landed right here till they drained the Cankey Key Valley Swamp from South Bend to Cankey Key, Illinois. There's all kinds of underground rivers and stuff. I had the U.S. Department of Soil and Water Conservation show me where the underground. When the city dug up, my beautiful pond is gone. The neighbor runs over, he's got four-foot water in his basement. They messed up the underground. So, then the city wants to raise my taxes. And I've been fighting that each year. I don't have a problem welcoming anybody in town. I don't want a casino. I don't need a casino. And it's not in my backyard. It's in my front yard. With the traffic along there, when they did put in streetlights, here's a bus stop for the kids. No. Hundred yards that way, honey, we don't put them on every other pole. I pay taxes all these years. I can't get a streetlight? I had problems with the bus, so I called the South Bend, called the police department. I very much thank the South Bend Police Department for coming out there and checking. I almost got hit walking my son into the bus. The bus has stopped. The sign is out. So, we get through all of that. They just keep wanting to jack up my taxes. And this last year, I got the paperwork that they didn't even have. Anyone know what a shyster is, a flim-flam man? That's what happened to me. So, I'm going to take my paperwork, go see the mayor, and let them know. The city comes through. The street's crooked. My pond's gone. I can't see out of there. When, when they plowed, they came through and the jackhammer is, of course, the street's crooked, so they just jackhammer right there. I couldn't get a double-wide driveway that I had. I paid taxes over thirty years and here I'm living and everyone wants to welcome in the Potawatomi. I do too, but not a casino.
I'm sure you have thirty seconds.
When you, thirty seconds, you went to Currie View Apartments. We did not have much crime rate until we have it. I do understand more people get more rates. You talk to them. Why don't you go down South Locust Road and knock on the door? And I mean South Locust Road because everything here says Locust Road. Locust Road is south of South Locust Road. South Locust Road is north of Locust Road. It goes from Prairie Avenue to the bypass. From there and south of Ireland is Locust. They don't have the map right.
I'm sure your time is up. Thank you.
Have a good day.
Next. Name and address, ma'am.
Judith Overmeyer, thirty-four forty-seventh South Locust Road. Where'd he go? Um, I've lived there forty years or more. And, um, so, this whole thing has been a big issue for us. Um, a couple of things which I think need to be clarified. In terms of crime in our area, every Sunday I look on the map where the crimes are. There are very few crimes. South of Prairie Avenue and the South Locust Road corridor, very few. Most of them are up around Sample Street and on North. Um, so, we don't have crime in Rum Village.
Ma'am.
It's one of the safest neighborhoods in the city, really. Um, the jobs that are going to be brought, I agree with the other gentlemen that when I was teaching careers, I always encouraged the students to get at least a technical degree so they could make a wage that was above poverty level for their family. Even at twelve dollars an hour, that's still poverty level for families. Uh, for single moms having to pay daycare, they're not going to get, the area citizens are not going to get the free daycare that the natives will supply for, for their, um, peoples. So, the jobs that we're going to get are going to be low-paying. The amount of money that the casino will The amount of money that the casino will take out of our community from our own citizens going there stays with them. And the lady was right. They do not pay taxes. I saw a thing in a paper where DeWalt Jack Casino had made 54 million in one quarter. They gave the city a million, they gave the school system a million. That left them 52 million. They didn't pay taxes on that. So the money that they make, it's like Vegas. What happens there stays there. What money goes in there pretty much stays there. I saw a thing in the paper recently that said that some of the casinos in the area were concerned about this casino because it would take monies away from their profits, their incomes, which was $1.4 billion. And they were afraid it was going to go down a couple hundred million. It doesn't come back into the community like some people would like to think. And so I hate to say to Mr. Davis, we weren't informed about any kind of area meeting, and as far as the other gentleman who said the casino lights would be in his front window, the casino lights will burn right in my back window. And I want to know when we're going to turn those lights out. I don't need to see them all night long. We visited the DeWalt Jack settlement, and the housing units are lovely. They're very nice. That might improve the value of my property when I decide to sell and move somewhere else. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak against? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the public hearing. Section is never closed. Oliver, rebuttal?
Yes. I appreciate all those who spoke in favor and those who spoke against. We live in a community that is benefited by some of our key institutions that live or are housed in Notre Dame, Indiana, who do not pay taxes in the city of South Bend. But even though they don't pay taxes in the city of South Bend, they benefit South Bend, and they are one of our key employers, and they help the city of South Bend greatly. We live next to those who are in Mr. Walker, who don't pay taxes here, but we shop over there greatly. And so therefore, the argument that they don't pay taxes because it's their land, some of our key universities and our key places do not pay taxes in South Bend because it's their place. They live there. That's where the government has allowed them to have a city right there. And so therefore, we cannot expect them to pay taxes when that's not according to the United States Constitution, that they would be to do that. They would not violate the Constitution if, we don't ask anybody to violate the Constitution. And the Constitution gives them their own land, just like it gives our neighbors in Mr. Walker, and it gives our neighbors in Notre Dame, Indiana, the ability to keep their own taxes. And those places, many of them give us donations to our government, and it's helped us out too. Yes, we want them to do more. We really do. And I hope they do more. But at the same time, we welcome them to our area. And so I do agree, I've watched the crime breaks ourselves. The crime rates in the southwest have been the lowest, even though many times people say that the west side has been there. And we have, Ms. Kin, hello? Who's that?
Mr. Schrock.
Thank you. So we can look at crime rates and everything else. I must say that we have to look at being a more welcoming community. We can write statistics to those who have drinks, those who do other kinds of things that we may not agree with, or eat certain ways, but we have to be a city that's open to all types of businesses. A growing city is a progressive city, and that's the biggest thing. I recognize those who have had some challenges. I hope those who are in the Pokagon Band or Legion can hear, like I have heard, those who live on Locust Road, some of their challenges. And those challenges started way before I was on council, as they can see. There were some of the issues that they were talking about, and we heard about them. And the thing about it is, as they can listen to their own neighbors, I'm sure that they can work along with helping them there, too. So as they can look at what has been their challenges in terms of their streets. The Prairie Apartments, when they were moved up there, there was a lot of opposition to them coming there. They were saying that was going to cause crime to the area, and then, I mean, held up this council meeting next. And right in front of Prairie, and I want to thank Gavin Furlic, who's donated some of his allotment to help us with the Prairie Apartments, because they are walking in the streets right now. All of them, and they're walking the streets to get the bus stop, right there in front of Brunel's, in the snow and everything else. We are putting a sidewalk over there right now to help out in that area because of the fact that, like our gentleman said, the streets over there, over the years, were not designed to deal with that part, Prairie Apartment and everything else. So we are fixing up the infrastructure there, and it's taking some time, but I think with the movement of the Pokagans, the Anavinians coming, it's going to help us all to deal with the infrastructure and our whole section of the U.S. 23 Quarter, the Locust Road, Prairie Avenue, Gertrude, all of Ewing, everything else. Because Ewing Quarter was supposed to have been done years ago, too, and that got delayed. There's a lot of projects out there in that southwest side that got delayed over time. All of them were supposed to be fixed at the end of the, um, South. I think having more people come there, and the more business come there, it's going to help this city to build back up the infrastructure and put it back on the top priority where it should have been, as high as downtown South Bend and as high as everybody else. Let's welcome there, leave the lights on for them. Thank you.
I would like to make a motion for the adoption of 1522.
Hang on a minute. We'll start with comments or questions. Karen? No? Gavin?
Okay, sure. Just want to clarify, what Oliver's introduced is, it's a non-binding resolution. The city council is not approving or denying anything. This is simply a positive welcome to the Pokagon Band, to come to our community, and obviously, welcome. We welcome you here. Appreciate all the feedback. Would encourage anyone who's interested to attend. I think there's a public forum tomorrow at 6:00 p.m. at the Century Center. But again, this is just a positive message of welcome. We're not making any decisions, we're not approving or denying anything here tonight. Oliver, just put together a resolution to essentially say welcome to the Pokagans, so.
Any other comments from council or questions?
I'm with the comments and then a motion. I will be-
Would you hold your motion until all the comments are read by council members?
Okay. Well, then, if we're going to go in order, you say your comments.
I just want to reiterate what Councilman Gavin Furlic said. This is strictly a resolution, non-binding, and there has to be a lot of discussion on this, but we'd be foolish not to at least look at both sides and then weigh in on this. And we anticipate a lot of citizens' involvement. This is a long way from anything occurring, so let's just welcome them, and then we'll have the discussion as time goes along. Thank you.
Do you have any comments?
Yeah, sure. And I think that's what I was trying to establish when I was talking to you earlier, and I think you got missed the screw. But one thing I want to recognize is the fact that this council gets beat up a lot when it comes to decision-making sometimes, and those things are usually sometimes more out of our hands than, you know, more than often. And so when I get to that conversation, then I want to make sure that we recognize the fact that there is another level of government here, and that some of the concerns, you know, those thoughts need to be on the 14th floor. It doesn't exist at the council level. It exists in times to 14th floor. Obviously, there's a conversation going along with the current mayor and the tribe that's coming in. So I just wanted to make sure that, for educational purposes, that people understood that those concerns, those questions, those attitudes towards, you know, this development happening, need to be with the mayor. It doesn't need to be with the council. The council's doing a great job of, you know, recognizing and saying, "Thank you for coming in." I'm going to say the same thing. But when the decisions are going to be brought in, it happens there first, and it comes down to the council possibly for approval. It doesn't start with the council for approval. So I just wanted to make sure that point was being clarified, because I think that we get beat up, and the mayor needs to be here to, sometimes, to qualify that, but he's not here. He's absent today.
Valerie?
Sure. So I'll simply reiterate the comments I had made earlier in committee today. Thank you, Councilman Oliver Davis, for issuing this resolution. I, too, share your enthusiasm in welcoming the Pokagon Tribe. I also share your enthusiasm about the economic impact that the development will bring to our community. In my tenure on council, we have welcomed other companies to town. None of the companies that have come to town have had the potential impact of 2,000 or more jobs, which this community desperately needs. I was talking to a friend who has a better understanding of the type of salaries that some of those jobs will pay, and I was told that, for example, a blackjack dealer could make upwards of $60,000. Now, these are jobs for the high school graduate resident, perhaps an individual not necessarily with an advanced degree, like a lot of the high-tech biotech jobs that, of course, we are also eager to attract. But for our residents without PhDs and without, you know, advanced medical degrees, I certainly want to see those residents have opportunities to make a good wage, to pay their mortgage, to feed their family, to buy a new car, to send their kids to college. And in my tenure here on council, we have not had another opportunity like this to bring 2,000 jobs or more to the community, plus the 1,400-plus construction jobs. While I do understand the statement that one of our residents had made, that many of these jobs would likely go to your own residents, if that were, let's say, 500 of the 2,000 jobs, that still would be a significant number of jobs for our residents. And in terms of crime, I have to disagree with some of the statements that were made that this could have a negative impact on crime. I believe that when people don't have good choices and don't have opportunities to earn a decent wage, to pay their mortgage, to feed their family, to buy a new car, to buy shoes for the kids and send them to college, then sadly, sometimes, people make bad choices, and they turn to crime. I do believe that when good opportunities to make a good wage present themselves, a lot of people will take advantage of that. And I enthusiastically welcome the Pokagans to our community, as well as the development that you are proposing. So, Councilman Davis, thank you for bringing this resolution, and to the members of the Pokagon Tribe that are here with us tonight, thank you so much as well.
There's your vote.
And I make a motion to adopt Bill 1522. Okay.
Mr. Ward. Mr. Furlic.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mrs. Shad.
Aye.
Dr. Furly.
Aye.
Mr. Oliver Davis.
Aye.
And President Tim Scott.
Aye.
Seven ayes. Thank you. We'll go on to 1523. Resolution confirming the adoption of a declaratory resolution designating a certain area within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as 1015 Oak Street, 1042 Oak Street, 1107 Oak Street, as a residentially distressed area for purposes of a five-year residential real property tax abatement for South Bend Mutual Homes Limited. Very quickly, Mr. Z. Confirming, to you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Community Investments sent this-
Oh, no. Confirming, go ahead.
Braxi, 14th floor of this building, Department of Community Investments. Good evening, councilmembers. Before you, is confirming resolution. These are three parcels that were missed in the original tax abatement with the South Bend Mutual Homes tax abatement originally. Essentially, we're adding the three properties as part of a 24-home co-op that's going to be created out near the West Washington tip. The new project taxes are expected to be somewhere around $84,324. The taxes to be abated over the 24 homes are about $24,350 over the five years, and the taxes to be paid are about $59,974. The petitioner is here to answer any questions and make a presentation to the council.
Very quickly.
Hi, my name is Ann Mannix, 724 West Washington, five-year tax abatement. I brought some handouts. I can see you all have had a long meeting. The only point I want to highlight is this is affordable housing. All of the monthly costs are under $600. Seventeen of the houses will be less than $500. Thank you for your support.
Any questions from council? Seeing none, we'll open up to the public. Anybody, anyone speaking in favor of 1523, please come to the podium. Anyone speaking against, please come to the podium. We will bring it back to council.
Motion for adoption.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, John. Call the rule. Councilmember West.
Hi.
Mr. Henry Davis. Mrs. Shad.
Aye.
Dr. Furly.
Aye.
Mr. Oliver Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Furlic.
Aye.
And President Tim Scott.
Aye.
Seven ayes. 1524. Resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as 3230 South Bend Avenue, South Bend, Indiana, 46635, an economic revitalization area for purposes of a four-year real property tax abatement for Rainbow Rascals, South Bend LLC. Committee report?
Community Investments sent this board favorably.
Presenter?
Good evening again, council, Braxi, 14th floor of this building. Before you is a four-year tax abatement proposal for Rainbow Rascals. It's located near the corner of 23 and Duffin Road. It is expected investment of 1.2, roughly 1.2 million. The total taxes to be created are about $160,335 over the four years. The taxes to be abated are $63,612, and the total taxes to be paid over the four-year period is $96,523. The petitioner is present to make a brief presentation and answer any questions that you may have.
Very brief, please, sir. Name and address.
Good evening, council. Chauncey Hitchcock for Rainbow Rascals, 1732 Crooks Road, Troy, Michigan, 48084. As I heard the comment, "Very brief," I just would like to say, it reminds me of what humorous Mark Twain once said. If you'd like me to make this one-hour speech, I can do it right now. If you'd like it to be three minutes, it'll take a little bit longer. But I really appreciate, I really appreciate the opportunity to be here. Rainbow Childcare Center has been an operator of quality, safe, affordable, with a serious academic component, readying children for kindergarten for almost 30 years. And we have several locations in the state of Indiana, starting in the early 1990s, and it's just taken us a while to find the right location in South Bend, which we now have. We're very excited. We plan on starting construction within the next few weeks and finishing the project later in the year, hopefully, early November, and truly appreciate the consideration.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Nope, thank you. Seeing none, we'll open up to the public. Anybody from the public wishing to speak in favor of 1524, please come to the podium. Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak against 1524, please come to the podium. Seeing none, we'll move back to council.
Motion for adoption of 1524.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Henry Davis. Who's Henry? Mr. Henry Davis, excuse me.
Aye.
Okay, Mrs. Shad.
Aye.
Dr. Furly.
Aye.
Mr. Oliver Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Furlic.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
And President Tim Scott.
Aye.
Seven ayes. Thank you. 1525. Thank you. A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, designating a certain area within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as 1702 South Robinson Street, South Bend, Indiana, 46613, an economic revitalization area for purposes of a five-year personal property tax abatement for Baymar Plastics Inc.
Community Investments sent this board favorably.
Thank you. Mr. Z.
Good evening again, council, Braxi, 14th floor of this building. Before you is a proposed personal property tax payment for Baymar Plastics Incorporated. The estimated project taxes created are $30,833, or, I'm sorry, $883. Estimated taxes to be abated over the five-year period would be $14,156. Total taxes to be paid are $16,700.
Total taxes to be paid are $16,727. There is, the petitioner is present and will make a brief comment about the project and answer any questions that you may have.
Great. Name and address, please.
Good evening. Jim McVeigh, representing Baymar Plastics, 1702 South Robinson, South Bend. Baymar Plastics is a small company, been in business in South Bend since 1978. And as we've continued to recover from the downturn in the economy in 2008, we've found it necessary to do some improvements in the company. We've placed an order for a new molding press that's going to support a program that has another five years to go. And also some cooling towers to support the entire molding operation. If we don't make these improvements, we're going to not only threaten the jobs that we have, but it will keep us from being able to obtain the new business that we've quoted that is planned for this equipment. And so that's the reason that we're petitioning the city to help us out a little bit. And we appreciate your time and consideration.
Absolutely, thank you. Any questions from council? Seeing none, open up to the public. Anybody wishing to speak in favor of 1525, please come to the podium. Seeing none, anybody wishing to speak against 1525, please come to the podium. Seeing none, council?
Motion for adoption.
Second. Mr. Warding. Mrs. Shad.
Aye, yes.
Dr. Furley.
Aye.
Mr. Oliver Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Furley.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis. And President Tim Scott.
Aye.
That would be seven ayes. Thank you. First reading, Mr. Warding, 1815.
We need a motion to continue 1513 to 427.
Second. I mean, some move, second. Some move. You second up. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Karen? All right, first reading. First reading, 1815. First reading on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending various sections within Chapter 20, Article 13 of the South Bend Municipal Code, by amending and establishing citywide regulations banning the use of all handheld electronic communication devices while driving and amending Chapter 2, Article 19, Section 2-213, addressing schedule of ordinance and code violations.
I have a motion to send this to Health and Public Safety for 427.
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. 1915, please. First reading on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, calling for the establishment of a South Bend Municipal ID Card Program.
Motion to send 1915 to Health and Public Safety and Community Relations.
Okay. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, oh, never heard of them, motion like that. So it goes where, when?
Health and Public Safety and Community Relations with no date. Let's back to committee for discussion. Would you like a date?
Yeah, next week would be mine. I want it-
Two weeks?
Yeah, the next time we have a council meeting.
427.
I think one of the concerns with council is that, you know, probably bigger conversation, bigger discussion-
Rest fine, we need to get it on the, we need to take it off.
Let's got it on the agenda, at least for some time.
It needs to be on the agenda, don't take it off.
Per the author?
Per 278.
Thank you.
Can I have the motion?
Aye.
Yeah.
Yes, that's a motion.
Some move. Move. Second.
Public discussion.
Yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
2015. Mr. Warding. 2015. First reading on a bill amending the zoning ordinance for property located at 605 North Hickory Road, South Bend, Indiana, Councilmanic District 4 in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
I, if you'd like to send the bill to zoning and area planning. Oh, area planning?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 2115. First reading on a bill amending the zoning ordinance and requesting a special exception for property located at 2212 Missawaka Avenue, Councilmanic District 3 in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Motion to send 2115 to area planning.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Unfinished business, or anything from council? Seeing none, remove the new business, anything from council? Seeing none.
Oh, I'm sorry. It was unfinished business, I blanked out, I'm sorry. Have we had anything back from that whole Captain Booth patio situation that the guy's supposed to send back from there or something?
No, we will request again, we have not heard back from our prosecuting attorney in town.
Oh, really?
Correct. Thank you, sir. We'll move to Privilege 4, where you can come up and speak to council. You cannot speak on anything that was on the agenda tonight. You have three minutes. Ask Gavin Furley to time you, he'll give you a one-minute exit warning or 30 seconds.
Jesse Davis, PO Box 10205, South Bend, Indiana. Henry just asked a question I was going to ask, so I will just-
Sorry.
Hope you all had a good Easter holiday and have a good night.
Thank you, sir. Please come again. Name and address.
Samuel Brown, 222 East Navarre Street, representing Citizens United for Better Government. We have an important election coming in the city of South Bend in May, and the people are asking me, and I know our USB didn't have debates set up for the council and the mayor, but the people in the inner city, their votes, and they would like to know if there's going to be anything set up for the inner city, that they want this debate. A lot of them say get out of our USB. It puts them in distress for how to get out there. And we would like to know, and I don't have the answers, but maybe someone on the council or somewhere to get this debate in the inner city, from the Quack Center or somewhere. Because this is too important of an election not to have this debate out there. We want to know the facts. We want to be able to obtain the facts from the candidates. And we have the right as taxpayers to give this down. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?